Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P. M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. And I want to note that troop three oh five is with us observing this evening. So I'd like to ask them to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody would stand for that and then followed with the invocation by Dr. Rick Janelle, Lead Teaching Minister at Bellevue Church of Christ, twenty-three eleven Madison Street. So.
Room attention. And salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you, troop three oh five. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Shall we pray? Our God, we thank you for the beautiful day. We thank you for the sunshine and the weather that is so welcome this time of year. We thank you for our city. We thank you for the ones leading it. We thank you, Father, especially for first responders and all who wear uniforms of different kinds to do their job. We pray, Father, your blessing on all who are involved in medicine, all who are involved in teaching, all who are involved in things that make our, our community a better place to live. We ask your blessing in our lives, your blessing on the leaders of the world. We pray for peace and we pray for not just peace in the world, but peace in our community and peace among our citizens in Christ. And we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Janelle. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Welch. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Not from the crowd. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is special presentations. We have a couple of presentations. Five A, we'll start with the proclamation declaring May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three as National Public Works Week. And Dave, if you'd like to join me up front and if you have some other public workers here, they can come up as well.
If they want to.
Big time TV. So this is a proclamation from the city of Bellevue, Office of the Mayor. National Public Works Week proclamation, May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three. Connecting the world through public works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Bellevue, Nebraska. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is, it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in Bellevue to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual public, National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, resolved, I, Mayor Rusty Hike, do hereby designate the week, May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have here unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the state to be affixed, done at the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, the sixteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. So present this. Dave, do you want to introduce your team?
On my immediate right is Jim Shada. He's our Parks and Rec Director.
Oh, yeah, cool.
On the right, Jim Shada, the Parks and Rec Director. Next is Dave Ernest. He's the Assistant Street Superintendent. Bobby Riggs was not able to be here tonight. Todd Jarres manages our Fleet Department. Tracy Niemeyer does our facilities management, building management. And Matt Knight on the left is the Acting Manager of Engineering Services.
Thank you. And Dave, you and your guys do an outstanding job for the city of Bellevue. I recognize each one of you. We have a great public works, entire, public works departments throughout the whole city. And you do a fantastic job. And I think the public realizes that. We get lots of compliments on, on all your work from, from all facets of the city. So I present you with this proclamation.
I just wanted to point out, Paphoni Ramos, our wastewater superintendent, was not able to be here this evening.
We'll stay out here on the, on seven B. Got another presentation. I want to recognize two people that are vital to our city and have been for many years. They both have reached the forty-five-year milestone with the city of Bellevue. So I think that's well worth recognizing. We'll start with Jim Shada. Jim started his career with the city of Bellevue in nineteen seventy-eight as a planning assistant. He moved over to the Parks Department in nineteen eighty-eight as a recreation coordinator. And since then, he has been a fixture in the Bellevue Recreation Department and has made a significant impact in the lives of many youth in our community. He also may have given you some tennis lessons over the years since he has been a volunteer tennis instructor for over half of his career. During his years in the Recreation Department, Jim has worked tirelessly to improve the recreational activities offered by the city to area residents. And he is especially proud of his work designing and overseeing the installation of the new Stonecroft ADA Playground Project and the recent installation of new playgrounds at ten parks throughout the city. He is very dedicated to the city's recreation programs and usually works well over forty hours a week and rarely takes vacation if sports are in season. For the last three years, Jim has taken on a dual role as Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. Although his increased role brings with added responsibility, Jim has been described by some of his coworkers as a great boss who listens to new ideas and is not afraid to show his appreciation for hard work done by his employees. He is also always willing to assist other departments as the needs arise. During his limited free time, Jim is a proud and devoted husband, father and grandfather and loves to play tennis, fish and follow his grandchildren to all their activities. Thank you to Jim Shada for the difference you have made in Bellevue. So the second person we're recognizing is also forty-five years. Had a look at that twice, but it was fifty years because you volunteered for five years of that. So you didn't get paid. So forty-five years of, of being an employee for the city. And his name, I thought when I first took over was Just Ask Steve. I thought that was your name. Because Steve, not only is in the fire department, but if you have a problem with your telephones or, or whatever, Lisa always says, just ask Steve. So. Steve Betts joined the Bellevue Fire Department fifty years ago as a volunteer firefighter at the age of sixteen. Five years later, the city hired Steve to work in the Street Department, where he worked for approximately fifteen years until he taught himself how to program police and fire radios. He then became the city's Communication Director. Steve was instrumental in building the Sarpy County nine-one-one center and the fire training site. Throughout these years, he continued volunteering his time as a firefighter and rose to the ranks to become Fire Chief of the, of the then volunteer fire department. Steve, Steve served as the first full-time paid Fire Chief on an interim basis. And in two thousand and ten, he became the city's first Assistant Chief with a dual role as Communications Director. His dedication to the city is evident, not just in his fifty years of service, but also in the phrase, "One is certain to hear at least daily in City Hall." Call Steve Betts, he'll, he'll be able to help. Steve puts in far more than his fair share of hours at the city. Every week during his free time, he does like to hang out with his wife, Amy, and they enjoy traveling and checking out new places. He also looks forward every year to taking the lead with the electrical setup and the vendors of the Bellevue Rocks Riverfront Festival. Look forward to that? In fact, he recently commented that his love of this festival and the people that put it on may keep him around the city for at least five more years, especially if he gets some chocolate brownies out of the deal. We'll be lucky to have him. Steve, you want to come up, please? Forty-five years. One more round of appreciation for Stephen. Thank you, guys. Okay, item nine, approved citizen communication, nine A. Judith Mansisidor. And Judith is at the podium. And she's asked to be on the, uh, public time to be heard. So if you can try to limit your time to five minutes, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Judith Mansisidor, one-three-eight-zero-four, Trigaron Drive, Bellevue. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. I am appealing to you to pass, in a city council vote, the city initiative and referendum petition ordinance outlawing abortion, making Bellevue a sanctuary city for the unborn, or to put it on the ballot in the next election and let the people pass the ordinance. In our efforts, we collected seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three signatures from citizens in the city of Bellevue. Seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three voices speak to you that children in the womb matter in the city of Bellevue. We have demonstrated substantial support for the ordinance. There is no real downside to putting the measure on the ballot, but there is tremendous upside. It places the matter in the hands of citizens where it belongs and where it may have gotten if not for improper pressures on the signature process. Additionally, it respects voters by protecting the process from thuggery. Our petition effort was severely hindered in December of two thousand twenty-two when two threats from the group Jane's Revenge were made that specifically referenced our effort to make Bellevue a sanctuary city for the unborn. One threat was posted at a school and the other was posted in a church, usually the safest places in a community. The threats were substantial. They threatened to quote, "Shoot up the school with an automatic weapon." The threat to the church was similar. I personally went to meet with Chief Clary to discuss the possible danger to volunteer, volunteer citizens circulating the petitions. Chief Clary assured me that threats were receiving, that the attention due. Several law enforcement organizations were working together with local law enforcement. The story was broadcast on local and national levels. The threats were so ominous. Unfortunately, the threats were also effective. Several people said they support outlawing abortion in Bellevue, but they did not want to sign their name, address and birthday on a piece of paper circulated by a volunteer that would become part of public record. People wanted to sign the petition, but were unwilling to expose themselves and their families to the thuggery. We also spoke with people afraid of being fired if they signed or publicly stood up for the petition. One person circulating the petition was threatened that he would be shot if he ever came into the neighborhood again. Our petition effort proved that a significant number of people want to outlaw abortion, even with serious threats of violence made against us. Our citizens' petition initiative to make Bellevue a sanctuary city for the unborn was also unique. As one city employee commented, that it was the first she had seen in her thirty years in her position. The city of Bellevue puts forth new ordinances frequently without a signature collection effort. The city of Paxton, Nebraska, voted four to zero to pass a resolution to send an ordinance outlawing abortion to the number of her ballot without a formal signature collection effort. If the city of Bellevue decided to do this, it would not be the first city in Nebraska to do so. Similar ordinances have passed in sixty-seven cities throughout the United States. I am asking you, Mayor, City Council, to place this ordinance outlawing abortion on the next ballot. Every elective abortion ends the life of a child. That is the science of abortion. This chart shows the undisputable facts. The total number of children aborted in Bellevue in these recent nine years was seven thousand five hundred and sixty-seven children, more than even the signatures we collected in support of outlawing abortion in Bellevue. In two thousand twenty-one, nine hundred and thirty-nine children were aborted. Those children would have filled to capacity eighteen school buses, just to give it some perspective. The next picture Susan has is a picture of a beautiful child. This child's mother was tempted to abort him. A woman reached out to the mom and offered help. The mom chose life. Would anyone here dare speak against this child's life? No, of course not. As long as we allow children to be aborted in our city, we are, as a community, speaking against the life of children just as beautiful and worthy of life as this one. Mayor, City Council, it's time to revitalize the city of Bellevue. Revitalize comes from the Latin word "vit," which means of or manifesting life. Let us, as a community, truly revitalize the city of Bellevue by embracing and valuing every life without discrimination against children in the womb. Let the citizens vote to make Bellevue a sanctuary city for the unborn and abortion illegal in our city. Put the ordinance on the ballot in the next election. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming out and speaking publicly. And you're being listened to and I appreciate all the support as well, letting your public voice be heard. So appreciate it. Thank you. So move on to ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the approval of the application for First Watch Restaurants, Inc., doing business as First Watch, number six zero zero five, for a Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at twenty fifteen Pratt Avenue, Suite one oh five. And Julie J. Leonard is the manager. So can I ask if Julie is in the audience? Okay. You can come up and speak at public or if just here for questions. So thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing for ten A. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the liquor license? Please come forward. Anyone that would like to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'm going to close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the approval, the application for First Watch Restaurants, Inc., doing business as First Watch, six zero zero five, for a Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at twenty fifteen Pratt Avenue, Suite one oh five, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one two three. And Julie J. Leonard as a manager. Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Are there any comments or questions? Julie, thank you for coming out. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
And those all that were here for the public speaking, you're not, certainly don't have to sit here and listen to all the city business, but if you want to leave, feel free to. So. And I'm not making either. Item, item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. We have none this evening. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four-one-two-three, request to rezone the south thirty-five feet of lots three, four, five and six, Hopkins subdivision and part of lots ten and eleven, Albright's Choice subdivision from M.L. to B.G.H. for the purpose of a restaurant. Applicant, R.G.H. Design, general location, seventy-one-ten Railroad Avenue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance number four-one-two-three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number forty-one oh four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about seventy-one-ten Railroad Avenue, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And the second reading and public hearing will be June sixth, sixth, two thousand twenty-three at six P. M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structure at sixteen-eleven Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a statement and then I'll make a motion. The city council voted to postpone this item until the June twentieth meeting. However, the city received a request from Mr. Ritz and the property owner to have this item placed on tonight's agenda as a resolution of this matter affects the ability of Mr. Ritz to close on his potential purchase of the property. So because of this, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and have items fourteen A and fourteen A one heard and voted on at tonight's meeting.
Okay, do I need a motion on the fourteen A first?
No, I think you can just.
Okay. Okay. So do I have a second on the suspension? Uh, motion by Cook, second by McCaw to suspend the rules and have the public hearing and vote this evening. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. So it has been approved to waive, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding fourteen A this evening? Please come forward. State your name, address and.
Name is Eric. Hi. Name is Eric Ritz, fourteen oh two Hancock Street, Bellevue. Basically, as was stated, after the last meeting, I spoke to the banker who said I was not able to close on the loan with the pending resolution still outstanding. I asked, you know, requested that we put this back on tonight to discuss. It's, uh, I mean, it's straightforward as that. It's, um, I need to have the resolution to remove the condemnation status in order to close on that so that I can move forward with closing the purchase, moving forward, getting permits and getting this property back up to code. And I. permits, and getting this property back up to code and occupiable. If you have any questions, I'm here. I've got my partners with me tonight. I've got the current owner of the property here tonight for any questions that anyone has, but I think that's pretty much what it, what I'm at right now.
Good. Appreciate it. Any questions, Eric? Councilman Cook?
Mr. Ritz, you and I talked on the phone and stuff, and we received a letter from your bank. Is that correct?
Correct.
And pretty much what says in this letter, if this demolition issue is removed, that he will then clo, that you will close on the house May twenty-fourth.
Correct.
So everything is, everything is in play for that closure, if the council removes that order.
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
Good. Thank you. Public hearing's still open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this? Please come forward.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Steve Hurlbut, and I'm here this evening on as a representative for the, sorry, for the Dig Guy Hurlbut Family Trust. As you've heard from Eric and, and, and the letters that you've received, the information that you've received, I'm also here to encourage the council to remove this resolution to allow Eric and his partners to proceed forward, which, as you've already heard, things are in, in, in play. We're ready to roll. He's ready. He's more, excuse me, he's more than capable, and he has proven that, as well as prepared to complete the construction of sixteen-eleven Franklin, to bring it back up to a habitable status that would also enhance the available homes that the city of Bellevue would have to offer, and to complete the, the, complete the construction of the structure. That's all I've got to say. I appreciate your time and consideration. If there's any questions that I may be able to answer.
Good. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Christian, I'm gonna ask Mr. Christian a question. Mike, if you could come up. Mike, it looks like we have at least in play here. We got the property owner, the potential owners here. We've been sort of given the, the feeling, or given, I'm gonna call them facts, that the bank says if you remove this order, they'll close on the twenty-fourth, allow these three gentlemen to move forward. My question to you is, are we missing anything? Is this a logical path to go down? And, and my second question is, and I know it's not gonna tie them in exact times, but give me a, if, if we vote to remove this, what do you think is an appropriate time-wise for these, you know, after the closing on May twenty-fourth? What's, what would you think would be a reasonable timeline that they should be back in your office, and maybe they have been already, to bring permits, bring a plan, let you know what they're gonna do, and then start? When, how long, should that period be? And then when do you think is a reasonable amount of time? And we're not gonna hook them on it here tonight through a motion, but it may be something, if they don't do anything, and we'd have to bring them back. What would you say would be a reasonable timeline? Get permits and get this thing back where they can put a sign out front, you know, apartments for rent?
Let me just start with the, with the resolution. Historically, we've never removed a resolution without closure. In other words, it would be removed when it was brought back into habitable form. However, if you chose to remove it, the red tag would remain in place, is uninhabitable, and a condemnation procedure would have to start totally all over again to bring forward another resolution. The red tag, by ordinance, stays in place until it is, does become habitable, or it's either demolished. But again, if the resolution is removed, then that process would have to start anew. Once he does closure on the property and comes in and obtains his permits, historically, when a property is uninhabitable, we put a timeframe on it of approximately six months versus type of construction to be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would like to speak regarding fourteen A public hearing?
Pat Sullivan, I represent the seller in this matter. This is just simply a chicken and an egg problem. Bank won't go forward unless this cloud is removed, and I'm sure you guys wanna say, well, we really don't wanna remove the cloud until you've got new ownership. The problem is, is there's no way the bank's gonna proceed otherwise. If they don't get it done, and rightly so, you restart the, the process again of condemnation, and at that point, if I'm your city council, I'd be at the point of no return and saying there's no further breaks. I appreciate the sympathy in the room that you've given on this. The difficulty that's come in trying to rehab it is, as you're aware, very tight workforce, particularly contractors, and if you're a one-and-done shopper for a contractor, your bread isn't gonna get buttered, because they got somebody else that gives them work all the time. These guys are in the business regularly, the buyers, and it sounds to me like things will get moving quite quickly once they're able to close. So I appreciate, I understand this is rare for you guys to remove this from the agenda, but under the circumstances, I don't really know that we have any other choice to get this remedied and, and not create waste by tearing it down. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I, I would just add to that, I, very reasonable, it's the only way they're gonna get it done. I mean, the bank's not gonna loan him or them a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand and then have the house torn down, so, or that chance. Any other comments? Councilman Casey?
Two quick questions for Mr. Ritz. Could please. The six-month timeframe that Mr. Christian mentioned, is that reasonable time? Can you get it done in that time?
Yes. As Pat Sullivan said, the hardest thing is finding contractors that have open availability. I've already locked in an electrician, I've already locked in an HVAC. I've got a plumber, I'm waiting for a second quote on that, but this is really just a fit-out project, so the six months is very doable. You know, I'm also financially inclined to try to push this to go as fast as possible, because I can't start collecting rents until I get a certificate of occupancy. So every month that it takes me longer is literally money out of my pocket. But yes, the six months is very doable, in my opinion, so.
Thanks. Second question, I, I understand with the bank, the condemnation order is a, is a no-go, but with the red tags still hanging out there, is that an issue for the bank? Or have you asked that question?
I have not asked the question. I don't think that it would be, just because it's a red tag, because it's not a habitable, which, it's not habitable whether there's red tags on there or not, since there's no certificate of occupancy, which he knows that. We are getting a construction loan to finish the project, to get the certificate of occupancy. Once we get that, the collateral that we're using for that loan gets released, as the property will then hundred percent collateralize, or actually it's eighty percent collateralize the, the loan. But I don't anticipate the red tag, because the red tag, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, just represents that this is not a habitable structure at this time, and there's not, other than no one can live there, there's no other real legal ramifications to that, which, until you get a certificate of occupancy, no one can live there anyway, so.
Thanks, Eric.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, pub, public hearing's closed, so I'm gonna go to fourteen A one. Resolution number two zero two three dash zero two condemning the structures, structure at sixteen-eleven Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. Do I have a motion on that, or? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Before making a motion, I just wanna check with legal counsel. It would seem that we have it before us, and if we were to allow this sale and the purchase to go through, what we would do is bring it up, vote it down. We would just vote no. The alternative is to vote yes and prevent the sale and prevent the reconstruction or final construction. So back to my question, the procedure would be the easiest to just go straightforward, make the motion to approve, and then vote no.
That would be correct, or you could make a motion to deny the resolution.
Either way would work.
Right.
Okay, thank you. With that, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the condemnation.
Second. So we got a motion by Preister, second by Burns, to approve the condemnation. So if you wanna go forward and let it sell, then a no vote would be appropriate, correct?
That's correct.
Good. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Did we get a second on that?
Burns.
Burns, okay. All voting no, motion fails.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for investing in the city of Bellevue. Item fourteen B, approve request of application for a privately operated farmer's market at Washington Park to be held on Saturday mornings, June third, two thousand twenty-three, to September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, except for the weekend of Arrow's Aerospace, two thousand twenty-three, if held, from six A.M. to one P.M., and to waive the fees. And I will open up fourteen B for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. I know the applicant is out of town, so I think Jim has talked with her, but anybody here wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve fourteen B.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Now any comments or questions regarding farmer's market? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just very grateful that these folks have stepped forward, that they're willing to take on the market. It's a great asset for the city. It's a nice opportunity to connect with food and people. It's a social event for those who haven't been there on a Saturday morning, each Saturday in the summertime, so you can get some good food, some good friendship, bring your dog, bring your children, have a picnic lunch, enjoy the city. It's a great amenity. I'm really grateful that this couple has stepped forward, and I appreciate that the city has encouraged them to do so. Thank you.
In passing, I, I heard, I believe they have sixty signed up right now, so, so it's good. Any other comments or questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution number two zero two three dash twelve, authorizing the commemorative street naming in honor of Officer James Mulbauer and Champ, and authorizing the mayor to sign. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve fifteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That was all, you got the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there should be an unveiling, you'll, I'll, we'll make sure the council knows either sixth or June seventh. I think they're still working that out in the afternoon. Okay, item sixteen, current business. Sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with L.O.A. Daily for the Bellevue Professional Building, located at twenty-two oh six Longo Drive, in an amount not to exceed one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Old Castle Materials Midwest Company, doing business as Omni Engineering for the two thousand twenty-three asphalt overlay project, in an amount not to exceed one million six hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents, plus a ten per percent contingency of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and one cent, for a total project cost of one million eight hundred and fourteen thousand, forty-three dollars and ten cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Burn, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for consulting services on twenty-twenty-three overlay projects, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Make motion to approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Fourth Amendment to the purchase agreement and escrow instructions with Redwood USA LLC. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Comments or questions?
All voting yes, most, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the eighth lease extension with Avery Lotion for the Bellevue Police North Side, seven twenty-six Fort Creek Road North, in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Councilman McCaw?
I make a motion, we approve sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, second by Burns. Comments or questions?
No.
Just like stereo.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. May reports will be attached to the June sixth council packet. Any comments on old reports? No closed session, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burn, second by Preister.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you all, and thank you, Troop three oh five, for being active in your community. Appreciate you coming out. If you have any questions, I'm...